Yeah, he'll be here. Here's George.
Here's George.
You got a third?
You got a third?
Yeah.
What are you talking about?
Well, I just mentioned to you a minute ago.
Oh. Oh, okay. What do we even talk? Are we on, Bob?
Yep.
Okay. All right, we'll call the meeting to order if everybody can stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Mark is not here yet, so who would like to act as secretary tonight?
I choose Amy Primara.
Okay, Amy, it's you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, our first item on the agenda is exemplary people, and we are going to talk about the Da Vinci Festival coordinators and volunteers. Jim and I will go over here. John?
As you know, this is our second year that we've conducted the Da Vinci Festival, and it's getting better and better every year. And I've asked John to say a couple of words about the Da Vinci Festival. He really has been a key component in making it all happen, along with the people that we'd like to recognize tonight, so. Come down this way so we can.
Caps you all on TV.
I'm actually very excited to talk about the Da Vinci Festival. It really has, it's grown in just two years. We didn't know exactly what it was going to be like last year, but it was a success. There were tons of parents and kids walking through, and again, this year was the same. But there was a little bit different this year. The teachers that you see here and some that aren't here, and I'll introduce these people in a second, they really stepped it up this year, as far as what they presented with their children, with their students, what information they presented for the parents to see about the projects that they've done. They've really made it seem, and allowed the public to see, what a real excellent program we have in all the arts, CTE and the arts. So I would like to congratulate them. I would also like to thank Julia Strong, who really helped spearhead it too, up here at the high school. But these are some of the representatives of our school system that really participated in Da Vinci. I'm going to read the names of the people that are here, but I'm also going to read the names of the people that couldn't be here, who also made it happen. So our teachers are John Biazzi, who's here, Monica Gagnon, who's here from the high school, Alice Pulliam from the high school, and Chrissy Scarpetti from the elementary schools, and they really are the rest of the art. And you can have all the ideas in the world, if people don't step up and say, "We're going to make it happen," it wouldn't happen, and these people really stepped up and made it happen. Our CTE, these are the CTE classes that we have at the middle school and the high school, and we have Mike Demcek here, who is one of the CTE teachers from the middle school, but also, who also participated in this is Mike Sircone, Nancy Di Pietro, Peggy Anne Diaz, Jeanette De Sette, Doug Fedorko, Bill McDonough, and Nick Nataleino, and they were all part of the Da Vinci, too. And this year we had, and last year also, but this year we had a bigger representation in the music department, and the music teachers are here. Mike Ansis, Dan Buckner, who also works with our grade five band, and Mike Martone, who's not here, but Mike Martone worked at the middle school.
In transit.
We thought he was going to walk in.
We thought he was going to walk in, so they're here. But also, I'd like to also recognize the staff members who became part of our Common Chords, which is a band made up of staff of the district, and they performed at Da Vinci, but they've been performing at all various functions around the town, and they also made it special. So that's Mike Ansis, John Biazzi, Dan Buckner, Abby Carey, Jack Ceccholini, Matt Curry, and who are not here are Mike Martone and Geralmo Rahas, but I want to thank everybody here for being part of it.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, everybody. But you're also excited to do some stretching. So October is volleyball for me, so. Well, thank you, everybody, for that presentation and everybody who worked so hard on the Da Vinci Festival, and it was a huge success once again this year, as our second year of running, so we are so grateful to have that in the district now. That is a huge addition to our offerings.
The value of, if I can just add in, the value of putting the arts face front in the district is that it highlights for us the depth of the programming that we have, and it focuses our attention on how to grow the arts to become even more important in the district, and more kids get exposed to, whether it's 2D or 3D, or the performing arts. That can't happen unless we hold it in high esteem, just like we do our athletic teams and all the other things that we do so very well in Monroe. So from the bottom of my heart, I'd like to thank all of our exemplary people tonight, and I look forward to seeing what next year looks like. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to report of the chairman. As everybody knows, the budget failed the first round by a little over 200 votes. The next budget vote is going to be on Tuesday, April 28th. We have had a reduction in the board of ed side by the first selectment of $50,000. And hopefully, this will get out and everybody will pass it this time around, and I'm sure you'll want to touch on that later.
I do, yep.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, second. Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Gutman, a second by Mrs. Crouch, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons, and we will start with our Massey High School representatives.
Hello, everyone. Well, all school trips got back safely from Germany and France, Greece, and the robotics team got back from Kentucky. And all music classes from Massey leave this Thursday for Montreal for their school trip, and on Friday, DECA students leave for their national competition in Orlando. Also, this Wednesday, boys volleyball is playing at home at 6:00, and the rest of the spring sports are doing very well, including tennis and track and all the other sports.
Oops. Alrighty, to continue, the sophomores have an assembly tomorrow from the Narcotics Enforcement Officers Association to present the dangers of narcotics and prescription drugs. Also, AP tests begin in two weeks on May 4th, and then we'll run through the following two weeks. And lastly, all seniors must make their college decisions by May 1st, so it's a stressful time for us all, but May 1st is the official deadline for all colleges. And that's it.
Great, thank you. As we've done in the past, could we have a follow-up with our trips, on how those went by our students?
I can ask my daughter to come, she just got back from Greece.
Whoever would like to come for those.
I'd love to hear about those.
Right.
They sounded, all of them just sounded so amazing, so I would love to hear, from a student's perspective, what they thought of them.
And then, how did the students do on the robotics?
I'm going to ask Joe to.
I'll ask Ally. They struggled a little bit.
We struggled a little bit. The teams there are like, just a step above, and you could tell, there's a lot of private schools there that get so much more funding, and there's a lot of schools that are like homeschooled, or you can tell their parents built their robots. So I think for Massey, we did well, and we, you know, all had good sportsmanship and things like that.
Ally told me, part of their great concern is they changed their robot, and we're literally making changes up to about four hours before the competition. From their last competition.
How was the new location? Did you go to the California location? No?
I didn't, but I heard this place was, I mean, everyone liked California better because it's California, but everybody liked the convention center and said it was like a lot bigger, because I know they're getting a lot more teams each year. I think there were 850 teams this year, and I know the first year there were 85, so it's grown exponentially.
Well, regardless of how you guys did, we had three teams go, so that is a huge accomplishment.
And it was a great experience overall, so.
Great, well, congratulations. Does anybody have any other reports? It's kind of quiet. Public participation, if anybody would like to come and address the board, just come, sit up here, give your name and address to address.
But not the cheerleaders.
Right, not the presentation. Anybody else that has anything else. All right, hearing none, we will move on. This is going very quickly this evening. We will move on to our report of the superintendent.
Gabby, if you would, the fund statement.
Sure. Just very quickly, I mentioned it in the narrative, but I wanted to point out to you all that if you actually turn page 13 of your reports, you'll notice that there's a total now in the encumberment section, so we successfully encumbered our salaries. This is, like I said, this has been a long process for me, so it's something that has to be done after every payroll, so that was, it was something we worked through, which was quite nice. So we have a better idea, we have a really good idea of where we're at at the current time, which still makes me nervous.
Oh, okay.
Just saying. Anyway, and as Donna had mentioned, the first referendum was defeated, so we're thinking of strategies, which I think Jim will touch upon further. And we did receive a prescription drug rebate from Cigna about a week and a half ago, which was a little bit more than anticipated, which means that our prescription drug program that we instituted with this current fiscal year is working quite well. So that was a nice little surprise, two days before vacation. And that's really about it, from our perspective. It's just waiting to see what happens with the budget so we can move forward.
As Chairman Lang said, the budget referendum is April 28th. We are down to, what's our new percentage, Gabby? What was?
About 7.3 or something.
Yeah, okay, 1.73. If you recall, I think I came out with an initial budget to the Board of Education in the fall of about 2.55 or so. The final budget that the board adopted in, I'm sorry, in January, was a 2.25 percent. That was cut considerably down to 1.82 or so, and now down yet again. We run the risk, you know, when you craft a budget, that in my estimation, and I think the estimation of all the people at our cost centers within the district will agree, when you prepare a budget that does not have fluff in it, is a true and transparent budget of what we expect to expend, and you present it, and it gets defeated, and you get cut, you start to do damage, okay? Because we did not, you know, we did not play the game of inflating the budget. And I know that recently, there were some blog activity that, you know, talked about salaries and all of that, and, you know, I was thinking of Jeff, who, you know, was the chief negotiator for the four associations that we did negotiations for this year, and we made significant inroads in medical benefits and controlling costs. And what Gabby referred to in that rebate that we got from Cigna demonstrates just how powerful those concessions are in managing our budget. And, you know, when you make inroads on things like medical benefits, or sunsetting, you know, retirement incentives and those kinds of things, when you make those inroads, they're not just for one year, they're for eternity, okay? You've made those concessions for eternity, really, for all intents and purposes, because, you know, every year.
You're still saving.
They're still there, and they're still saving you money, okay? So that's why I like to refer to the efforts of the Board of Education as, you know, a cost containment strategy, which I think has been very, very effective, okay? And I congratulate, despite what's printed out there in the public, I congratulate the board for the efforts that they have endeavored in that regard. You know, the rebate that we got from Cigna can cover some of this reduction, okay? We still don't have a firm handle on where all of the cuts, where that money will come from. We will do exactly what we did in the past couple of years, that once the, what's a budget is approved, we will demonstrate where the money is and present a, you know, a revised budget for your adoption, so that we have the actual budget going forward from there. So I'd like to see as much public participation at the next referendum as possible. I think we need to get our numbers up if we're going to have a successful referendum. I think all of the information is available to everyone who's interested. It's on our webpage, and if there are any questions in the public, or, you know, here tonight, or in TV land, if you have any questions about the budget, please feel free to contact me. I'd be happy to review any budgetary items and what they mean, and explain how we got to those numbers, you know, whether we do it in person or over the phone, I'm more than happy to take the time to explain any of those changes. Thank you.
We will move on to presentations, and first off, we will have a presentation on the middle school cheerleading by the Jackie Hall parent representative, so whoever's doing it, come right up here. You're going to be on camera and on microphone.
So we have a technical assistant joining our two parents up here, Dina Vedera and Amy Rosati, and there's a third one.
My husband, Jack Vedera.
And Jack Vedera, okay. Jack Ceccholini called me a few months back and said that the parents had contacted him about starting a new program, and wanted to bring me into the loop, and how do you go about doing this, et cetera. I then consulted with John at the high school, because there is some precedent for bringing new programs on. I think, was it volleyball, John?
Boys volleyball, and prior to that, girls golf.
Okay. And the board has followed a pretty predictable process for bringing on any new programming like this, in the form of that it has to be self-funded for two years before the board would step in and start to absorb the, I'm sorry, John?
Yeah, two years full funding, and then in the third year, the board has funded half, and then the fourth year, board takes control.
Okay. Unlike the volleyball and the golf programming, this program is a little bit different in that it is not, cheerleading is not a recognized sport under CIAAC rules, okay? So, but that doesn't matter in terms of the adoption process. So why don't we just let our representatives here give us, they put together a great PowerPoint, we'll take a look at that, and then open the floor for any discussion.
Good evening, folks. We are here tonight in hopes to form a Jackie Hall middle school cheer team. My name is Dina Vedera. I grew up in Monroe, attended Stepney Elementary, Chalk Hill Middle School, and graduated from Massey High School. I cheered for Chalk Hill Middle School, and then for Massey. I brought back pictures from the past, if you want to pass them around, and I'd like to bring back the tradition. I am a registered nurse, I have four kids, two of which will be attending Jackie Hall High School. This is Amy Rosati.
Hi, my name is Amy Rosati. I have two children in the Monroe School System. One is at Jackie Hall currently, and I have a daughter who will be attending Jackie Hall next year, should have Stepney currently. I am a teacher, I taught here for 18 years, and I'm also an assistant cheer coach for Monroe Lions.
Our purpose and rationale for a middle school cheer program is to keep the girls physically active and in the interest of minors, especially those who are not involved in more traditional sports, basketball, baseball, softball, javelin, polo. To promote school unity, pride, and spirit. To keep the girls involved in cheer, acting as a feeder program for our high school cheer team. We're speaking with Sue Feodor and Margaret Hobson, who coached our varsity cheer. They strongly support the need for a middle school cheer team. Some of the girls trying out for varsity do not have the necessary skills for a varsity team. We'd like to keep pace with surrounding towns who have middle school programs, Tumble Shilton, Newtown, Oxford, who recently won in the last five years an outstanding cheer program at the Leesland. We'd like to cheer at boys' basketball games and compete locally. Attending basketball games and other winter sports would encourage other students to do the same. We would like to see the leaders filled with Jackie Hall students cheering on their peers. Again, we would like to increase the school spirit. And compete locally would be one, two competitions in nearby towns. We would take the bus up with our varsity team, cheer them on, they would cheer us on, and then come back home on the bus, the varsity cheerleaders. Important information, currently, Monroe Lions cheer organization has approximately 90 participants from 5 to 15 years of age. The middle school girls forecast to be 20-plus or minus participating for the proposed cheer Girls disconnect from cheer due to lack of available programs over winter in these crazy formative, preteen, and early teens years. Again, we'd like to maintain strong academics while conducting their time after-school cheer Implementation, parents or parents support financially for uniforms in competition games. Proposed financial costs per participant would be an maximum of $250. As you can see, there's a picture of the shell, the skirt, the liner, sneakers, briefs, socks, and bows, which will be covered. Competition fees as a group, you're ranging from $900 to $200 for a competition. Coaches and choreography will be donated time from Amy Rosati and myself, as well as assistants from other moms. I choreographed and coached the Shilton Pop Warner since my oldest daughter, who's 18, started in second grade. I then moved to Monroe when she was 11. I coached and choreographed for Monroe Lions, and it's the same for my younger daughter, who's in term since she was five years, 12 years old. Practice phase, based on availability, practice on cheer mats at Massey once a week. During our football season, our kids practice at Massey on Friday nights, when the varsity team runs the night long. We also practice one to two times a week at other available school locations, using their gyms. The elementary schools were very generous with their gym time. This will eliminate the need for coaches and the mats in finance store space. As you can see, the picture down there, mats average cost $35,000, and they are 42 by 42. They come in seven to nine panels, and to take each individual and roll them off, they're about six feet in height. Massey has two sets of mats. Mats they follow, new mats purchased four years ago by the Monroe Lions team, which cost $5,000, and they are now being stored at Massey, and used by their varsity cheerleaders. Mats for cheerleading are necessary for stunting, tumbling, and other sequences. A routine runs two and a half minutes. It includes a cheer dance permit, jumps, stunting, tumbling, and Massey would be necessary for us to use once a week to run our team. School pride, kids will decorate the school hallways with inspirational posters and cutouts originally for the lockers. This is done before basketball games and pep rallies, which will increase Monroe and Jackie Hall pride for everybody in the school. In conclusion, cheer will be a wonderful addition to the already positive Monroe school system. It encourages strong academics while devoting time after-school cheer activities. Loyalty and pride for Monroe. It keeps the kids engaged in healthy activities during formative years, promoting a well-run student. Pep rallies and school decorating, promoting belonging and pride for Jackie Hall students. Again, encouraging other students at our middle school to attend our basketball games, cheer on their peers, and increase the school morale. This is an example of what 11 to 13-year-old kids are accomplishing. This is a video of Oxford Middle School, again, that was recently filmed. This is a video of Oxford Middle School, again, this was recently filmed.
(shouting) V.A.R.C.A.S.S. Yell it out! Oxford, hell, sit this out! It's up! United, what's up? Number one, yell green! Green, yell go!
Go!
Yell white!
White!
Green, gold, and white! Yell green, gold, and white! Come on, green, gold, and white! That's right! V.A.R.C.A.S.S. The best! Fight hard! There's no compare to us! Rock star, Oxford! Yeah! (crowd cheering)
I just want to make sure that everybody understands that any time that we hire coaches for anything, it has to be posted within the bargaining unit first and then out to the public if there's not an internal, okay? So we would have to follow the same rules with the cheerleading coach for this as we do with all of our other coaches and choreographers, et cetera, okay? Any questions?
Great. Does anybody have questions? George.
You're looking at this as a competitive program where they would compete against other cheer teams in the area?
Yes.
Okay. And so this is, you're looking at this as like a carryover through the wintertime where they're doing Monroe Lions football during the fall?
Yes.
This in the winter, and then do they do anything in the spring?
Well, it typically ends in the spring, April.
Okay, okay.
And then they just follow through tumbling, they practice tumbling in both classes.
Right, okay. My daughter's in the Lions program in town, so I'm a big supporter of it. I just wanted to know what the overall vision is. So in terms of Masick, and you looking at this as a feeder system for that, they have a competitive cheer program at the high school, I gather, okay? And the participation, you're saying just it kind of wanes in that later middle school timeframe for the girls?
Yes, it just, basically, they stop. So they have the Monroe Lions and then they do nothing. There's no carry-on. But what happens in the middle school is the girls, now that they're older, they see the surrounding towns, you know, where we go and tumble, you know, where we have Shelton. They all carry through, they follow through with the middle school team, Trumble, Shelton, Oxford, and our girls don't have anything and they're always like, why can't we do that? So we're just trying to, you know, help have that follow-through too, so we could be part of that whole middle school cheer.
They'd be cheering for ten months, which varsity cheer, when you win in the high school, they cheer for ten months.
Great.
Lee.
Great presentation. Question, is your goal ultimately to...
Grow this program so that you'll have enough girls participating that you'll also support girls' sports as well?
Absolutely. And I was going to mention that we will also cheer for girls' basketball games. Our goal here is to get the bleachers filled with not only parents, but students at Jackie Howell, cheer on their peers.
Thank you. Great question. Anybody else?
Just to make my comment, my daughter cheered for many years with Pop Warner and it was fabulous. And I think it's a great idea, and I don't see why it shouldn't work. I mean, obviously, we have to follow whatever rules we have to follow. But I'm, as George is, I'm a, you know, very supportive of this, and I think it's wonderful that you guys donate. I know that you donate, and you donate so much time, all of you, and it's great. It really is, and it's wonderful, and the girls are very fortunate to have you guys doing this. So, thank you.
We would have some logistics to work out with the mats and, you know, the usage at the high school, et cetera. The difficulty lies in the fact that the mats are very expensive. We have two sets here. If we brought a set to Jackie Howell, it becomes a storage issue. They'd have to be out in the gym for all the time. So, you know, we could work out the logistics. John DeGennaro and his group and Joe could assist with all of that. I would recommend to the board that you treat this as a first review, and we'll bring it back on the next agenda and have a vote.
Absolutely. All right, well, we will be voting this at our next meeting, which is, what, the fourth, is it?
The fourth.
Fourth of May, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those historical pictures.
It's coming back.
And that gym looks the same. It hasn't changed at all.
Good night, everyone. Would it be a problem having them up at Masick or not?
No, no, it shouldn't be.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Great. Well, okay, so we will have this on our agenda for the next meeting to vote on this. We will move on to item B, which is Finnish lessons, and Jim, I will let you take that over.
Yeah, and I'd like to kind of facilitate the conversation if there is a conversation to be had. I know that, you know, reading a book in a couple of short weeks, this dense with information is always difficult, but I found the content of it to be very profound. So why don't I just ask the board members, was there anything in particular that stuck with you as you read through Finnish lessons? Yeah, Al?
I thought it was interesting how they use our research to drive their school system, and then we send people over there to figure out what's going on when we're the ones generating the research. We're not following the research, but they're following our research.
Yeah.
It was interesting.
There's another professor here in this country at the University of Oregon, I believe he's at, his name is Young Zhao, and a lot of what he's been talking about in presentations all over the country falls along the same lines. And he's a Chinese immigrant to the United States, and he came to America because he was educated in China up to, I think, the equivalent of a grade eight, and he could write and, you know, read and do all the things. And the only other position there that he could use those skills was already taken in his village, so he needed to come to the United States to expand his horizons. But he's been talking about a lot of similar things and a proponent of the kind of research that's driving the Finnish school system.
What's really striking me going through this book is how, you know, they did take some of our research and pedagogy, I can never say that word, pedagogy, to drive how they teach, but what's striking me over and over, and it's woven through the book, is how their educational system does not exist in a vacuum, you know? It is part of a larger strategy through the whole culture to embrace education. You know, they talk a lot about how if you took a Finnish teacher and tried to put them in the United States, they wouldn't do as well as they do in Finland because we have this culture of testing and high competitiveness that doesn't exist there. And so it's interesting to me that it's not just what's happening in that school for the eight hours a day or whatever. It's a whole way of looking at schools and culture and priorities in your culture and what is truly important. That's what's really interesting to me.
I agree.
I love the fact that teachers in Finland are such an esteemed profession, and you really have to work to be selected. It's not, you know, it's a very interesting position in that regard. I also love the fact that teachers are allowed to really, they're encouraged to think outside the box, they're encouraged to try new things, to take risks, and there's that whole collaboration piece. There's not someone dictating what you need to do, what the curriculum needs to be, what the lesson plan needs to be, all of that sort of thing. And what I really, really liked was the fact that their testing model, they randomly select people. It's not every child has to take this test. They randomly select all, you know, different, and so you have, you know, really a random sampling of students and capabilities and experience, and I think it's, and they don't have state mandates, you know? They really can, they really can teach. And I thought the high school model was so interesting because it really, the fact that there's subjects, subject teachers, and students really have the autonomy and the ability to pick what they want, what they're interested in. And if I think high school students could do that, think how much clearer of a path they'd have in college in terms of, you know, what they wanted to study, what they wanted to do. Were they, you know, did they want to go on to university or they want to do a technical type of application? So it kind of, it gave a lot of good foundation for that kind of...
We've been having similar conversations. All of the administrators in the district have read the book as well, okay? And the question, I keep circling back to the administrative group even this morning, is what can we do, you know, beyond all the mandates that we have to kind of create that same sense and that? And probably the most significant, maybe I'll have John speak to it, probably the most significant is our grade level meetings that we've really put together in the past, how many years it's come together? Yeah, and, you know, the grade level meetings is an opportunity for teachers on a regular basis to sit down with each other and talk about instruction, right, John? So, want to elaborate a little bit?
Sure. They do it by subject area also, so third-grade teachers, the first meeting of the month might be talking about English, English Language Arts, and then the fourth meeting they might be talking about math. And they're able to sit and really talk about what works in their classrooms. And if you read about, read everything in Finland, it is about professional development. It's not just about sitting in front of a classroom or standing in front of a classroom. And I think for, in America, if a teacher's not standing in front of the classroom, people don't necessarily think they're productive. But I go back to research and development from a company. Companies spend millions and millions of dollars on research and development. That's our research and development is our professional development. And so these grade-level meetings really help, and our professional development committee work together to come up with what they feel is beneficial, not from us, from the top down saying, "You need to take this professional development." They develop their own profession as well. So I think we've kind of come a long way with that.
Another area is with PE. Our kids do more PE than is mandated by the state of Connecticut, so that's a big plus, especially when you saw how much time young kids in Finland are outside in recess and getting fresh air and running around and burning off, you know, all the energy that they have and coming back refreshed to do good constructive work.
Back to your comment about what we could do here in Monroe that would be applicable to the book, I was really interested to read about how they did away completely 100% with tracking. There's no ability-based grouping. They are all, you know, diverse groups of students in classrooms with the belief that all children can learn. And I know that we say that we believe all children can learn, but there is definitely a theme of tracking that we do do here.
Yeah, you're right, Amy. And, you know, one of the things that I'll speak to about that, and Joe, you can jump in at any time, I mean, Mike Crowley at the high school as the instructional leader has been trying, I mean, all of those courses that you approved last board meeting, is an attempt to eliminate some of that tracking that occurs, you know, in the English 9-12, okay? We're a far cry away from that, though. I mean, we still have APs and we still have the honors and some of the other things that are going on, but there's a very distinct move to restrict the number of tracks that we have, right, Joe?
Absolutely. And I give Mike a tough credit for the work he's done there because, you know, it's culminating with what they're dealing with the seniors right now, the senior classes they just approved, but that movement started for the last three years, eliminated, you know, third level in the English classes, in ninth grade, then tenth grade, then eleventh grade, and now next year. And it's starting to take hold, and I think, you know, in some sense, the other departments now are looking to the English department as, oh, okay, okay, that can't be done. How do we have to deal with it? Going back to the professional development conversation, you know, collaboration between departments about differentiation in those classes, we have head of the nation, or greater head of the nation, and we're not all the way there, but it's definitely a moving point.
And my children were also very interested to hear how little homework the kids in Finland have. They would really like us to adopt that, too. I said, "Good luck," but...
When I think back in my career, when I started teaching in public schools in the mid-eighties, you know, every school really was an island, okay? You did not have standardization of curriculum. You would have, you know, you might be teaching earth science in seventh grade and life science in eighth grade in a particular school district, and in the school district next door, they weren't doing that. They were doing something completely different, okay, in seventh and eighth grade. So there wasn't this standardization. And that standardization movement for us really began around that time, okay? Was to, you know, eliminate, the whole concept behind our standardization was, you know, what, we know what a sixth grader is capable of learning, so let's make sure that all districts know what that is and create the standards around that, you know? And, you know, I think that just what's happened is we've gone a little bit to the extreme, okay, on this, and, you know, of course, it's very difficult to scale back as an individual district, but there are a lot of little things that we can do to bring the fun of learning back in, okay? To bring the creativity, the innovation back into the curriculum and not try to focus only on those things that are going to be tested all the time.
Yeah, there was a really interesting line in chapter four, and it basically amounted to, "In a Finnish classroom, the pupils do far more talking than the teachers." I thought that really, you know, kind of encapsulates the whole idea, you know, that it's really child-centered, and a lot of what we are striving for, the inquiry base, letting the children discover and, you know, giving them the tools to teach themselves, but I thought that was really very telling.
And I think the movement that Jack and the media specialists are talking about, the maker spaces in our media centers would kind of complement the same kind of thought that you're talking about here.
They've been doing differentiated instruction for longer than we have, it looks like. I mean, the way we used to identify special education students was insane. It made no sense. The research said it didn't make any sense, but it went on for thirty years and it didn't stop until like ten years ago. So what we're doing now, we're creating a whole generation of kids who can't read because we relied on discrepancy model that was crazy. Meanwhile, you know, other countries like Finland, we're doing differentiated instruction, you know, working with kids, doing small group lessons, that sort of thing. And it's interesting, they have much higher reading rates than we do. I think we're doing it right now. You know, I know, you know, schools, I know Monroe Elementary does a nice job of that, working with, doing differentiated learning, they have small group reading, you know, where they, you know, pull the kids out, work with them on reading. But, you know, the way in the past we did it just didn't work, and we're just starting to catch up now.
And one of my earlier comments when we first started this conversation was that the issue, we're comparing a country that has kind of a unified front on this cultural, educational, the whole gestalt of it, okay? And we're comparing it to the United States, which is so heterogeneous. I mean, even within the small state of Connecticut, the culture variation and the socioeconomic variation and all of those things really work hard at preventing us from collectively doing well. But if you take districts like Monroe, okay, and you look at what our kids are achieving, you know, they rise to the level of what, you know, the Finnish schools are doing. So there are some bright spots here. It's just that we're such a diverse population and we're not tackling that socioeconomic factor in any cohesive or focused way. And, you know, I think that, I think there was a reference in here, if it wasn't in here, it was in another reading that I did, where when Lyndon Johnson declared war on poverty, our scores, our PISA scores went up in subsequent years, and when that effort faded, they dropped back down again, okay? So unless we have that kind of collective effort to change the circumstances of some of our, you know, less fortunate districts, et cetera, you know, we're going to be tussling with this.
And I thought, like, when I talked to you last after last meeting, the fact that it took them so long to develop it, the fact that it was such a collaborative effort by everybody buying in, you know, made it successful because you had everybody have sort of a hand in it in developing it. So everybody had a vested stake in the success of it. And they didn't rush to establish a program. I mean, it started after World War II, and it kept going pretty much to the seventies. That is a long amount of time. It's not like Common Core, oh, you know, here it is in two years and we're rolling it out. I mean, they really took the vested interest in making sure that everybody worked and is working together to create this. So I think that's also why they're so successful because you have a society where everybody is invested in it, everybody has, you know, wants that success. And I don't necessarily think, and I don't know if it's because the US is so big and Finland is so small, that I don't think you're having that cross states. war on poverty, our scores, our PISA scores went up in subsequent years. And when that effort faded, they dropped back down again, okay? So unless we have that kind of collective effort to change the circumstances of some of our, you know, less fortunate districts, et cetera, you know, we're, we're going to be tussling with this.
And I thought, like, when we, I had talked to you last after last meeting, the fact that it took them so long to develop it, the, the fact that it was such a collaborative effort by everybody buying in, you know, made it successful because you had everybody have sort of a hand in it, in developing it. So everybody had a vested stake in, in, in the success of it. And that they didn't rush to establish a program. I mean, it started right, after World War II, and it kept going pretty much to the seventies. That is a long amount of time. It's not like Common Core, oh, you know, here it is in two years and we're rolling it out. I mean, they really took the vested interest in making sure that everybody worked and is working together to, to create this. So I think that's also why they're so successful because you have a society where everybody is invested in it, everybody has, you know, wants that success. And I don't necessarily think, and I don't know if it's because the US is so big and Finland is so small, that I, I don't think you're having that cross states.
And I mean, you, you raise a really good point about the rush of things. I mean, if you look at the past three years of what we've been through with the teacher evaluation, Common Core, ASPAC testing, I mean, all of these things became mandated before the instruments were designed.
Right.
Okay? I mean, we're still tweaking instruments, okay, to, to support these initiatives, you know? So, yeah, it's a rush.
Right.
What is the, I don't remember, what's the poverty rate in Finland? I don't remember what it was.
I don't remember the rate.
They don't have much poverty.
I was looking at the Connecticut, the Connecticut State of the, of Education today for the thirteen, fourteen school year. I will tell you that one of the graphs that just astounded me was the percentage of free and reduced lunch in Connecticut. In 2004, it was about 22 or 23%, I think, I'm doing this entirely from memory. And that year of the report, the thirteen, fourteen year, it was 37%.
Wow.
Okay? And if you look at it graphically, I mean, it's a graph that just, it has a very steady slope right up like this of the number of people that are, you know, in, in tough times.
Three, 3.7% live in poverty. In our country, 24.
21.7.
21.7. And trying to teach a hungry kid how to learn and do math is very difficult.
Right. Okay. Thank you for taking the time to read this. I, I found it to be fascinating and, like I said, we, we will look, we will continue to look for ways to incorporate what we can within the federal and state mandates that we operate under.
Thank you. We will move on to all business and we are going to have an SAT plan update by Joe. Are you gonna use the screen?
No, no. Wish I had some kids involved here. I just wanted, you know, to provide you with a brief update of what we did. We had our, we had our March 20th professional development a couple, a couple weeks back. At that professional development, both our ELA and math groups worked in two-hour blocks. We're gonna sample questions from the redesigned SAT and how they can implement them into our curriculum, into our benchmarks, into our assessments. Our next district professional development meeting is this Wednesday, where we're gonna start planning our PD for the, for the fall. And I can guarantee you that, that this work will continue and will be, will be included in our August offerings. Also, at the PD on March 20th, the English department specifically had a professor in from Southern who's discussing a lot of the reading and writing skill expectations and they were using that in our content in fact of PSATs and SATs. And then kind of as a whole school, where the big focus this month has been on, on close reading activities in, throughout our districts. CTV, history, science, world language, you know, trying to utilize those skills of determining the meaning of unfamiliar words and context and so forth. And then the last thing, you know, one of the big pieces that we, we started this with just trying to get the parents on board of what's going on, especially with the redesigned, the redesigned SAT, is that continued communication with parents and, and our, and our partnership with Catalyst Trust. Catalyst Trust just sent out a free webinar and I sent it out to all the 10th grade parents because the 10th grade is the parents who will be taking, the students that will be taking the redesigned SAT. So it was a, it's a free webinar for all grade 10 parents. I actually just listened to the first one off, it was at six o'clock tonight, right before I came here, and listened to that. It was a free webinar talk to all the 10th grade parents, talking a lot about the stuff that I talked to you folks about, you know, just, again, trying to educate them on, you know, this new SAT.
Any questions? Joe? Great. Thank you so much for the update.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to new business. And first up, we will have a solar power and options presentation. You're gonna use the screen, right? Okay.
There has been some interest from board members and, and others about solar power and using our roofs and somehow generate power. Jack has done a lot of background work with some vendors to, to understand what this all looks like, so.
Perfect.
So, yeah, we've been in conversation with the districts as well as a number of vendors and put together this information for you. First of all, just to let you know, we looked at one building and the reason why we looked at just Masek for the study was there's a number of factors we have to consider with solar systems. One really major one is the size of the roof. Need to have enough area in order to install enough array to gather the electricity that you need. The other factor is the amount of electricity used. Masek High School is the largest energy-using building we have, probably the largest energy using in the town, I would suppose, but the draw is clearly there. The other thing that's going for us is the age of the roof. The, the systems generally go about 25 years. Our roof, the new roof that we did is warranted for about 25 years, whereas the old sections, probably 10 years to go, you don't want to put a 25-year solar array on top of a 10-year roof because then you have exorbitant fees of hiring cranes to come in and remove everything when you go to do the roof job. So that's another major factor. And then lastly, as we look at the ad hoc study within the various scenarios, we are looking at the possibility of other schools coming offline. So it doesn't make any sense that we consider those schools within the solar study when we don't know the future of the buildings. Whereas Masek, within all the ad hoc study, within every ad hoc scenario, Masek remains with every scenario. So it makes sense that this is the building that we studied within this solar work. The various aspects that we've considered, what's the environmental impact, what's the structural impact, the roof warranty I mentioned, snow loads are another consideration. You have these panels up there, you get 30 inches of snow, what happens? So you'll see we have some information on that. Also, the service capacity, can our electrical panels handle this introduction of power from this large array on the roof? So we've looked at all that and we have some information in each one of those areas. And then physically, you'll see scenarios for purchase lease and something called zero emission renewable energy credit. So we'll show you how that looks in terms of the financial outcomes for each one of those scenarios. So first of all, the environmental. For the solar array proposed for Masek in this study, it's 331, 331,000 kilowatts. Each American household uses roughly 10,000 kilowatts. So the net effect of this array would be equivalent to about 30 homes every single year. If your array was there, it would be equivalent to having 30 homes in Monroe coming off the electrical grid. So it does have a pretty significant impact on the environmental needs of our town. Another piece in here is if you think about summertime with the school, we don't draw a lot of power and Masek does not have a lot of air conditioning. So there's not a lot of draw here, but it's a time when we produce the most electricity from the solar panel. So the question becomes, well, what happens with all that power? Connecticut law does not allow you to sell your power back to the electrical company. What happens instead within these agreements is that is, it offsets future electrical consumption. So it's basically a credit for the future. So you do, in the end, have a benefit by this, this positive power going out. It then offsets your bill in future months. So the structural side of things, roof warranty, we've been in touch with Garland and solar vendors. Everybody's on the same page, yes, we would maintain warranty as we move forward with the specifications for solar. If the board wanted to go that direction, there's not a concern about violating, violating warranty. Snow loads, our initial studies show that, as you see in the panels on the right, they're dark, the solar panels are dark colors. And what happens is the melting on the panels is better than the melting on roofs, which are reflective to offset the heat. The panels are designed to gather energy from the sun, but roofs are intended to, to do the opposite. So the result is you have more melting off the panels, which helps when you get into these crazy snow loads that we've had with these big storms. The electrical system capacity is mentioned before, our system can handle and accommodate a solar system. It's actually set up pretty well for it in terms of adding those components that would be needed to support a solar system. So here are the financial scenarios. First one is the system purchase. The, the con side is it's more expensive in terms of initial, of initial cost. You have to pay everything upfront. That's the negative. The positive is there's more financial return over time. After you've paid for the system, every, every, all the power that comes from it is cash in our pocket. So the projected purchase cost is $1.2 million. Projected income is $2.8 million. After the purchase cost, it's net of about $1.5 million over 25 years. So that's how that would look in a purchase plan. Clearly, in this scenario, it will require bonding in order to make the initial purchase. Lease system, you have the spreadsheets in your packet, and again, these are just proposals. There's no, no upfront cost at the lease. And then there is a constant income that we could count on, anywhere from $19,000 to $56,000 a year. That fluctuation is based primarily on the bonding cost that you would have paying for the lease purchase of the system. So the total projected income over 25 years is about $900,000 in a lease plan. The ZRECs, this is new learning for me, Trumbull next door is going this route. You may have heard in the news about, they often refer to them as RECs, the renewable energy credits. In Connecticut, they refer to them as zero emissions renewable energy credits. And what these are, is a certificate that 1,000 kilowatts of renewable energy has been generated and Eversource has been mandated to purchase ZRECs via competitive bid or tender. So if we, if an investor came in and purchased the system to put on our roofs, we'd be, basically be landlords, giving up our roof space to put in a solar array. The investor would pay for this and then Eversource would have to buy the power from it. The net result to us is there is a fee we would be paid by the company paying for the array. We would be basically paid like landlords for the lease base of the roof. So the pros and cons of that are that there's, there's less risk to us in terms of the finances. The specifications for how the system will go in and who's responsible for what in terms of liability, those specifications are really important. One of the things we put into this study is if we did go down the ZREC route, we have $1,000 for consultation to work with firms that create specifications for these kinds of bids. And that would help to indemnify us in, through creating carefully created specifications in terms of who's responsible for what and who's liable should something occur because we're in the situation where we'd be a landlord. The other expense is a non-refundable deposit. Within this process, the fee varies based on the size of the system. The projected amount for us would be $5,000 to $6,000 to get into this program. Then after that is done, projected annual income, $37,000 per year for the first 15 years. After that, we're allowed to renegotiate with Eversource if we don't like the way those negotiations go. We can then put our ZRECs out into the open market and see who will pay most for those ZRECs again, basically the landlord fees back to us. So here's a quick overview of the finances in each one of those scenarios. And that's our overview.
Go back to the slide, Jack. Let's just make sure we understand that. So the, so if we were to purchase outright, we'd have about a $1.3 million investment to make, but we could expect to, to get about $1.5 million back over 25 years.
Correct.
Okay? And the lease option, nothing upfront from us, but we're, we're really reducing our, almost cutting in half our expected amount of return. And then the, the ZREC has a small upfront fee and then we could look forward to about $37,000 annually, almost $600,000 over 15 years, okay? I mean, the difference there, that's, that's a hard one to compare because you're comparing 15 to 25 years, okay? But $37,000 annually looks like it's middle, middle of the road in terms of the, when compared to the lease option.
Right. And there too, predicting the future is a hedge. However, energy costs have clearly gone up markedly over time. The likelihood of that $37,000 being more is very strong.
For the ZREC option, are applications typically approved?
It's, I don't know, I don't know the answer. We have meetings coming up on Thursday this week with a couple vendors. Gabby, Jim and I are meeting with them to delve more deeply into this. The application process is coming up fairly soon for the next round of ZRECs. And it does take a fairly lengthy amount of time to go through the process. There's months between each step. So that I do know. The impression I was given by one of the vendors is that we would have a, a strong chance of being approved in our situation because we have the brand-new roof, we have a big roof. And the other thing going for us is our electrical system. There's room to, to take that energy and we have major power lines very close to us, which also was to our benefit. Especially in the summertime, we have to have a way to be able to distribute that excess power. So the initial feedback is, looks very favorable for us.
Okay. Do we know of any other districts that have put, implemented solar? And if so, what route did they go?
Yes, there's been numerous districts who have gone this route. The ZREC, the one that I know that's gone down the ZREC route is Trumbull. Jack put me in touch with their, their folks over there. I don't believe, they've gotten approval for the ZREC apps last they taught. They don't think they're to the point of installation yet.
I think they're getting closer now. I spoke to, spoke to them the other day.
Okay.
I think maybe you, you should probably reach out to them again. I'm sure he'd take your call again.
Yeah, fair enough.
And I can also tell them that you're gonna call them because they're definitely, he's applied for more.
He has, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, he's gonna be doing a bunch of those things.
Yeah. It really is a really intriguing approach.
He did it in Branford, too, before he came to Trumbull. And he saved Branford a boatload of money. And then he was able to negotiate some roof repair in it at no cost to the town.
And I, I do know, and again, in speaking with the vendors, one of the questions we always ask is, who, give us a list of references? And there are numerous other districts that have gone. The lease, the lease route for sure, ZREC and Trumbull. I'm not certain about purchase, if anybody's done that.
If you just, if you just assume that you get $37,000 in the next 10 years, that works out to about 925 for the ZREC, assuming, you know, you could get more than $37,000 if you renegotiate it after, but let's just say it stays even. That gives you, if you want to compare apples to apples, that would give you about $925,000 over 25 years for that option.
And just so you know, the reason why 25 years is out there is generally these solar systems last about 25 years. What we've been told is that they've gotten better over time. Their, their reduction is an approximation, is their, their efficiency is reduced to about 80% at 25 years out. So it isn't like they're worthless at 25 years, but they do lose their efficiency over time. So we're, Thursday, we're meeting with the vendors, we're gonna get more information, have more details, and Jim, do we?
Yeah, we'll, we'll put it back on another agenda.
Yeah. This is, to me, this is very interesting.
Yeah.
These are some big numbers.
Big numbers. That will give us a lot of return over time.
Yeah.
I mean, the problem with the purchase one, I mean, the thing that worries me with the purchase option, just right out of the gate here, is we have a lot of big projects still in front of us.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? We have roof work that we have to do with Stepney and at the other schools and, you know, we have the, the air handlers at Fawn Hollow that's still in, you know, up in the air with this, the Honeywell Phase Two. And then we have the, the turf field issue, too, still on the table. So we have a lot of things going and so, you know, that option, to me, looks like it's a, would be a tougher sell.
One other important piece with the purchase, too, is we would then have to contract with somebody for maintenance. Whereas with the other two options, the lease and the ZREC, we don't have, we don't have any of that.
Yeah. See, that would be more attractive and especially if they only last 25 years. Well, even though you have a bigger return, you're dumping them after, you know, pretty much 25 years.
Where are we, sorry, Jack, where are we getting it from? Is it from the installer, the contractor that we'd be dealing with, or is there a vendor that we would be dealing with directly that supplies the panels?
For the actual panels.
Yeah. And who, who would be warranting them or, or paying the maintenance?
In the In the lease scenario, the contractor that we go with would be the warranter. They would, typically, they would be extending the warranty from the manufacturer anyway to us, but through the installer. The purchase, I think it would be a similar scenario. The difference is that, you know, once the install is done, in terms of regular maintenance, that would not be a part of what they would do for us. But in terms of failure and things like faulty materials, it would be more of those things covered. Again, that's, this is initial feedback from the vendors. The ZREX, we don't have to deal with any of that. We don't have to worry about it because it's somebody else's problem. Somebody else owns the system. We're just providing the space for them to install. So the ZREX, really, in terms of.
It's almost like a billboard.
It really does.
It's just like a billboard.
Right.
So in your 1.06 million under purchase, that would, does that assume maintenance or does that, or would that number be lowered?
The 1.6 does not assume maintenance. The amount was somewhere, I'm giving you a rough approximation right now, five, five grand, something like that per year.
Per year?
Yeah.
Okay. So then that number would need to be reduced by that.
And then also with the purchase, you also got to take into consideration, we're back down to 80, so we're going to be dumping another million dollars or so into a new system. So the money that you made over the 25 years, you have to.
Reinvest.
Reinvest.
Right.
So you're really not making anything. You're not saving anything. It becomes a hassle and becomes something else to deal with.
Well.
On the purchase.
Yeah, but the, the income is after the expense.
Correct.
So that's a million five after the expense. So the total.
After the expense of 25 years, but then at the 25-year mark, you have to shell out again because you're redoing the system.
Right, but you didn't take in 1.5 million, you took in 2.7 million.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
So.
So even if you chose to get rid of the system.
Exactly.
It's still.
Still made some money.
Right.
Could you give me any indication as to how long the process takes? Like, what would your target be?
If we went the ZREX route, isn't it, in that scenario, there's months between each step. I think realistically, in that scenario, we'd probably be looking at, not this coming summer, but the one following. Lease, I think we could make that happen just about whenever, if we wanted to sign on. Similarly, purchase, you know, would be a matter of when we had the money to purchase. I think that could occur just about whenever it was appropriate for the installation to occur.
Yeah, if you take maintenance, I'm assuming the 5,000, it'd bring that down to like 1.465 as our net under the purchase.
And we'll get accurate numbers on that while we meet with them on my very soon. Okay. Any questions at all? Thank you.
Thank you. Very interesting.
Yeah, proposition.
Donna, before you move on.
Yes.
I don't know if this is the right time to bring this up. I was just looking at our agenda and I'm looking at our students. And I was thinking, maybe, I don't know if it can happen this year, but we do, I just thought about this like a couple minutes ago and I wanted to bring it up. I'm sorry, I'm going out of order, but whatever.
Don't indulge.
We do the reports of the chairman, the committees and liaisons.
Yeah.
And then public participation.
Uh-huh.
And would it be, I mean, I don't know if we have to vote on this or is this something we all have to decide together, but I was thinking, you know, we make them stay throughout everything and if they want to stay, that's great. But would it be better if we allow them to leave rather public participation if they want?
Absolutely. They can. They're free to go whenever they like.
I don't know if they actually know if they're free to go. I know they feel weird getting up and leaving, but I think that, you know, they got something to do and they're still students and.
Your predecessors have done it.
Yes. So don't feel like you have to sit through the whole meeting. If you have stuff going on, once your report is done, feel free to leave.
I like staying through.
Okay. No, it's, it's totally up to you guys. It's great.
No, it's up to you, but.
I'm hearing that.
Some nights you have homework, some nights you have less.
Right. Yeah. It is, it is good to know for some nights when you're like crazy overwhelmed, then it's okay to go.
I mean, I know we're at the home stretch right now. I mean, I brought this up.
Yeah, they have like one meeting left.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but I'm saying from here going forward, maybe with the newer liaisons, we can explain to them that this is a choice thing to stay throughout the meeting around. Thank you, I'm sorry to go out of order.
That's okay. All right, anybody have anything else on the solar? All right, so we will move on to policies. We're on a second review of the two policies, which is policy number 5121, Students Examination, Grading and Rating, and policy 5145 dash, sorry, dot 122, which is Students Search and Seizure, Use of Dogs to Search School Property. And I am looking for a motion to approve those two policies.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a, a motion by Mrs. Crouch, a second by Mrs. Primorak, to approve policy 5121 and 5145 dot 122. Is there any discussion? Everybody would have, everybody received the revised 5145 dot 122 policy with the changes, correct?
It's 5145.
Sorry, sorry, 5145, I apologize. Does anybody have discussion or questions on those? Or any of the changes? All right. Hearing none, all in favor of approving these two policies? Thank you very much. Motion passes. Does anybody have anything else before we adjourn for the evening? Great, I need a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor. Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you very much, everybody, for a great meeting this evening.